At this time, we'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, five P M. The order. First item on the agenda is consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item two A, consider resolution adopting final assessment roles for the two thousand fourteen surface restructuring project. Steve, what's on that?
Mr. President, this is a public hearing on the two thousand fourteen surface reconstruction project constructed in two thousand fourteen. Obviously, it was twelve blocks of surface reconstruct by city forces. We've mailed notices to seventy-three benefiting parcels. The benefit worked out to thirteen hundred and fifty dollars per residential parcel. I have not received any written comments, so you could open it up for the public hearing.
Is there anybody in the audience that have any concerns? See you none. Entertaining a motion to approve.
I'll offer the mo- I'll offer the motion and the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the assessments. Any more comments? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher. Absent. Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz. Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item three A, consider motion approving issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity, conduct bingo gambling at Cathedral of Holy Trinity, and that's for November fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item four A, consider resolution to establish forty-five degree angle parking on south side of First North Street and two handicap stalls installed on between State Street and Washington Street. Steve, do you have anything on that one?
Uh, Mr. President, the Safety Commission received request from Mr. Paul Woschauer on behalf of Senate LLC to establish one block of diagonal parking on the south side of First North, so that'd be just north of the Senate location. The roadway in that particular area is generously wide. It's fifty feet wide, so it could angle, it could handle the forty-five degree angle parking and parallel parking on the north side. Once we re-stripe it, we need to conform to the ADA requirements, add a couple of handicap stalls. If you scroll down a little bit, we've got a parking layout that we came up with that would create an additional four stalls if the council so chooses. There was, I did have a discussion with the, with the fire chief. He had some concerns about parking and reaching over all that angled parking to get, to get to the existing facility on that side of the street, so I don't know if he wants to say anything, but it's doable. I guess it's a matter of maintenance and fire safety, in my opinion.
Mr. President, just for the record, I'm a member of Senate LLC. For disclosure purposes, I won't be involved in the discussion. I know I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, so the idea is that they want more parking stalls there?
Currently, there is parallel parking on both sides of the street, and yes, they would like to achieve some more, a couple more stalls, and we can get another four in there. We might be able to get five in there if we close up that one little driveway to that storage shed, but this is the arrangement that we came up with.
And the, and the reason for more parking is because people come and have events there, and it's hard to park, and is that more of it?
That's my understanding, that they'd like to have some more on-street parking, and there was some discussion about demolishing some of the existing buildings and creating a larger parking area, and that's one of the reasons I kind of put this off until the end of the summer. That and that the street was just reconstructed, finished today, so if we're gonna stripe it, now's the time to do it.
And, and from an engineering or traffic point of view, this, the street is narrowed, but there's plenty of room for traffic even with angled parking?
There is. We have two twelve-foot driving lanes, parallel parking on the north side, and angled stalls on the south side. It's, it's of sufficient width to handle that safely.
And the police, or then the fire chief has got some concerns?
Well, Maco Fire Chief, President Schmitz, councilors. The area that of my concern is the nineteen thirty-eight edition of that building, which is, which sits back fifty-five feet from the face of the curb. Our current aerial truck is a hundred and ten-foot aerial, and we set that up to see what we could reach, and even if there was parallel parking there, we wouldn't be able to reach the roof, but we can reach the third-floor windows. The new aerial truck, of course, is gonna be seven feet shorter. It has a wider base, so you're gonna have to move it further out and away from any parking. I'm guessing that we will be able to reach, hopefully reach the third-floor windows if that section in front of that building remains no parking. That's painted yellow right now. That was loading and unloading for the school when it was there. Of course, it doubled as a fire lane as well, so we could reach that building with our trucks. So that's my concern. If this becomes a multi-dwelling building, and there's that angled parking there, I would certainly consider making that a fire lane and, and have no parking. So I, I would ask that we keep that as no parking in front of that building and keep the rest as parallel parking.
I'm not, I apologize. I'm not, I'm not following you. I, when you say things like that, I mean, okay, we're on First North. We're on First North between the state and, and Washington. That's, that's the picture that I'm looking at.
Correct. And if, if you look in that center part.
And, 'cause you, you lost me on the nineteen thirty-eight edition. The nineteen thirty-eight edition is on Center Street.
Well, I think, are there two, are there two sections to that? That L part?
Well, there's a, there is the original nineteen oh, you know, there's the original old part, then there's the nineteen fifties edition, and then there's the auditorium. So I don't know. When you said nineteen thirty-eight edition, you got me off on Center Street. So that's, that's where, that's where you lost me.
That was a building official. Counselor Webster, the thirty-eight edition that he's talking about would be the classroom edition on the first street side, First North Street.
Okay, 'cause that's nine, that's not a nineteen thirty-eight edition, that's...
Well, it's nineteen nineteen up front.
Yeah.
And the thirty-eight edition, and then fifty-three in the back. There's three, there's three buildings there.
Right, but, uh...
And the auditorium was built at the same time. It's thirty-eight or thirty-four, somewhere in there.
Okay.
So there's three, there's three separate buildings that the school had classrooms in.
All right.
So it was nineteen nineteen, the thirties, and then fifty-three in the back.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't realize that there was a nineteen thirty-eight edition in a, onto the original building. I thought that was just the auditorium. Okay, all right, got it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, may, excuse me, may I ask the chief a question? When you're talking about the fire lane, chief, are you talking about where that concrete sidewalk comes out the First North, so it's like two parking stalls?
Correct. Well, the, that part goes from that, well, the nineteen fifty edition up to that one sidewalk or to the end of that thirty-eight edition there. I'm not quite sure what the distance is, but it's painted yellow, and that's where the loading and unloading.
Can you estimate how many stalls would be lost if you, we left that open?
Parallel or the diagonal?
The angle, as long as we've got that drawing there.
I'm guessing. It's probably about seven.
Okay, thank you.
I guess currently, do we have parking there right now? Just, I mean, being we're not using it as a s- school, but is there currently?
There was parallel parking on both sides of the street, yes, with the exception of that fire lane.
Okay. I guess was Safety Commission aware of the fire lane when they were reviewing this last November, you know, and writing up the proposal, I guess, you know?
At, at that time, Mr. President, I, as I recall, the fire chief was there and mentioned that he would have to check into it.
Okay.
Because of the, the situation with new equipment being, being on order, and it, it wasn't something that we had alerted to him prior to that, so I think their caveat was they wanted to hear back from the fire chief and then through this process.
Sure.
And just so that I make sure I understand, you're, the fire chief is concerned about this regardless of whether it's parallel parking or angle parking? Okay, okay. I, and I apologize for this, but I'd like to see a picture of what the, I'd like to look at this again. I mean, we've been waiting for this long. I'd like to see what the fire chief has in mind as far as where the, you know, where he'd put, put a fire lane. Can we get that done in the next two, three, four, or five weeks? But I don't mean to put it off.
Are you meaning you wanna table it? You know, I mean, I would feel a little more comfortable tabling it and looking at more of a diagram and outlining it, and I should, think we should also maybe look at for the future, you know, if we turn this into housing, you know, is it possible that the developer could then look at that side street and maybe widen it up a little bit to bring the parking closer to the building, you know, on that aspect? I mean, 'cause down the line, are we gonna be looking, is this just gonna be overnight parking, or just, I mean, twenty-four-hour parking, or long-term parking, you know, once it's turned into housing, you know, I think?
Well, I'm gonna move that we table this with the idea that this is a, a building that's, we, we, that is sort of, its use is changing. We've got concerns from the fire chief. There's no sense putting a lot of paint into it and then, you know, finding out that it's not really safe, so why don't we just table this for a couple of months to see how things shake out? And when, when it comes back to us, I'd like to see a diagram as far as what the fire chief would believe, would, believe would be the safest way with the equipment and the new use of the building.
I'll second that.
I got a question. Steve, is that gonna make a burden on you for striping it?
Well, certainly, that's the one you opened for discussion. I wanna bring that up. We can bring this back in two weeks, get it here quickly. The street department would be doing the striping, so if it's clean and dry and not freezing, they can stripe it, but I don't think we can wait a month.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Two weeks, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
Any more questions, concerns? That, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. We'll go on to item five A, one and two. Consider an ordinance amending section eight-point-two-one of the city code, City of New Ulm, relative to dog and cat regulations and licensing. Number one, second reading ordinance number fifteen dash zero-zero-three, fifth series, and number two is a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash zero-zero-fifth series.
Mr. President, all for motion to waive the second reading and including with that a motion to adopt.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to waive the second reading and motion to adopt. Any more discussion?
This is going to effect thirty days after the notice is sent, correct?
No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item six A, consider resolution approving the hardship deferral for the two thousand sixteen installment due of eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents for the two thousand thirteen utility street and alley improvements.
Looking at this situation, it appears that the applicant meets all the qualifications as far as age and income, and with that in mind, I will offer the resolution, waive the reading approving the hardship deferral.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the hardship deferral. Any more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item six B, consider motion establishing the special assessments for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, weed and snow removal and sidewalk replacement, and set date for public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on any?
I know, I think I brought this up last year, is, you know, we have some individuals that would...
Frequent flyers.
Frequent flyers, that we shouldn't figure out a way to, and some people, probably everybody could miss a mowing at one point, but it's like some of these folks we see every single year, and I, I just wonder if there shouldn't be additional penalties imposed. It just, it create a lot of work for our city staff, and we charge them the same amount as if they were first-time folks. I don't know. I, I would ask the city staff to take a look at that for next year.
I would support that. I think if they're been on there a couple of years in a row, I think we need to address it.
Well, there may, there may, there may be due process issues for, you know, assessing, you know, a civil or criminal penalty.
Parking ticket, you know, increases you violate.
Yes, yes, that's true, but this is, this is, that's, that's why it's a due process issue. But I've got no problem with people looking into it.
Yep.
Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item six C, consider resolution authorizing the closure of the alley adjacent to the B and L Bar Building, fifteen North Minnesota Street, and extension of the liquor license into the closed alley area during Oktoberfest on Saturday, October third, and Saturday, October tenth, two thousand fifteen, from eight to one, eight A M. to one A M.
There's just no end of fun in New Ulm, is there?
There should not be.
I'll, 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 I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading authorizing those closures for Oktoberfest.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item six D, consider motion approving the final assessment roles for the two thousand fourteen utility street and alley improvements. Group one, set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, November third, two thousand fifteen, at five P M.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item six E, consider resolution approving the request from Mike Crowell on behalf of Mike Crowell Construction Incorporated to vacate the easement area between twenty oh six, or twice, excuse me, twenty-four oh six and twenty-four twelve, Dakota Drive.
We looked at this once before, didn't we?
I think we were just doing a lot division.
Oh, that's right.
Two weeks ago on it. We were gonna find all of that, if I'm correct.
Correct, and, and part of that lot division would be the requirement of having a new easement, and so the old easement then no longer is necessary.
Thank you for reminding me.
So, I'd offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item six F, consider resolution accepting the preliminary two thousand sixteen budget for the City of New Ulm and establish a maximum property tax levy for the two thousand sixteen, and set a public hearing date to consider the two thousand sixteen budget. Are you ready?
I'm ready. Did you wanna start out, or?
No, I think you did a pretty good job on your presentation. We'll just...
All right.
Here we go.
All right, city councilors, and all of you viewing here tonight. Basically, what we want to do here tonight is basically go through the preliminary budget for two thousand sixteen. Hopefully, I can have you out here by eight o'clock tonight, so we'll try to go quick.
I made a motion, we skipped the reading.
Oh, no. I brought my makes things bigger here.
All right. Important highlights first. The property tax levy is increasing approximately two hundred and seventy-one thousand or four point one-two percent. Debt service levy is increased by two thousand fifty-three dollars, which is pretty much no increase at all for the debt levy. LGA is projected to increase seven thousand three fifty-one, which is nowhere close to inflation, and it's also projected that new taxes for two thousand sixteen will be approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. What this helps, or ba- basically what this is, is trying to come up with values of new construction and so forth. It'll be coming on the property taxes for two thousand sixteen. Our estimate for that would be approximately an increase of a hundred and fifty-five thousand that that would provide, so that helps offset the two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase. Interest revenue increased forty-eight thousand six fourteen, about fifty-three percent almost. It's, the rates have been going up, so we expect better interest revenue. Overall expenditures are increasing three million two hundred and forty-nine thousand four forty-one. We'll be explaining why such a large increase later on. Using fund balance reserves of three million five hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven in the general fund, park and rec and capital improvement fund. Some of the budget impacts that are not in the control of department heads are things such as workers' comp insurance. It's, is seven percent increases projected. Property insurance is two percent, liability insurance is two percent, auto liability of two percent increases, and then health insurance, we had projected eight-point-five percent, but since we have released this and had it done, we have found out in the last couple of weeks that we are going to have a five-point-nine percent increase, so.
You're certain, that, that's a certainty, or?
That is a certainty, so.
Remember when that used to be like in a horrific increase all on its own, and now we're like, wow, it's only five percent increase?
All right.
The interest rates increasing from point seven-five percent that we use for the interest revenue up to one point two percent. In lieu of taxes, decreasing twenty-nine thousand four fifty to one million eight hundred and eighty-five five sixty-six. That's the amount that we get from the public utilities. Going into the general fund, overall expenditure increase is two million ninety-one thousand four fifty-eight or twenty-two point oh-three percent. The levy increase for the general fund is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and six or nine point oh-one percent. Here you can see the graph for the general fund in total. You can see that it has increased. The two thousand twelve, you can see that that was up in two thousand twelve. That's because of the flood levy project that we had going on, and we used a million of fund balance that year for that, so. Moving on to just the administration department, overall expenditure increase is one million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand six forty-seven or eighty point four-four percent, which is quite large. Levy increase is six thousand one hundred and thirteen, though, actually just under one percent. Here you can see the graph for the general fund administration. Basically, the operations are status quo in this department. Basically, what you're seeing here is that there has been a request from the National Guard Armory to purchase land for them. Right now, we are estimating that to be around two million dollars, so, for the land, so that is, so we've basically have built in using reserves for that purchase.
Reg, is your preference to wait till the end for questions, or bring them up as you go? Doesn't matter, just so you know.
Doesn't matter. I mean, it's doomed while we're, while they're on.
Oh, we got it. Good. Let's, let's talk about that two million dollars. I, I'd like to, to hear how long, how far along we are in that process, what the likelihood is that the two million dollars of reserve funds are going to be used this year or next year, or whether it would be appropriate for us to include it this year, or appropriate for us to push it back next year. I'd like to know where we, where we are on that.
Okay. In, in the process, we've hired an appraiser, which is first step, find out what the land is valued at. We would then make an offer, you know, based upon that appraisal. We've had, had conversation, you know, recently with the property owner, and he's interested, you know, in, in selling. Actually, he's more interested in swapping out, trading land for this land. So the, the basic process would be is, I believe he's, the seller would have forty-five days to turn their money over and not face the tax consequences, so they can buy other land. They could buy an apartment. They could buy things that qualify, so they don't have to pay the capital gains. So, we're in the process of getting the appraisal done, and we should be probably in the next, I would think, month and a half, have the, the report done. The actual acquisition, according to the National Guard, they wanted that done by, I wanna say, May or June of next year.
Of twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
But isn't it planned not to build till two thousand twenty?
Well, in order to get their process that the land is guaranteed, they're, they're gonna be building the field maintenance shop.
Oh, yeah, that's what we're gonna be talking about.
The mechanic's area first, before they got to the armory, and that would be within the next eighteen months, so twenty eighteen is, you know, what they were hoping to, and then, you know, like two years after that, they would do the actual armory. So it's a phased approach for them, but we can't necessarily phase approach the land. We either have it or we don't, and that will dictate whether or not they build the first part, so until we know exactly what the dollar figure is, you know, from the appraiser, we plug this number in and just said, for now, two million dollars. Now, it might be less than that. It could possibly be more than that. I just don't know, but that's the number we, we pick. Now, we do have at least two locations, you know, where we've got reserves. We've actually got a land acquisition fund that has, I can't remember, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that, and the general fund reserve, you know, is, could be utilized for the remainder of the money, and it would not necessarily put us in that thirty-five to fifty percent that the state auditor suggests we keep. It wouldn't go, it likely wouldn't go below fifty percent. It might get to fifty-one or fifty-two, but it, it wouldn't go below that, so we'd still be on the high end as recommended by the, by the state for our cash flow purposes. Mr. Vorrock is probably more concerned about the, the bonding impact, where, you know, somebody in New York that looks at our rating, looks at this and says, wow, you, you spent a lot of money. Well, there's a reason, you know, and we can explain that. It's not that we didn't see, you know, you know, like City Hall fell down, you know. It's not because of that, so I, I'm not seeing...
We didn't hire a facilities manager.
Yeah, it's easily explainable, I think, to the, to the bond people. We're still within our thirty-five to fifty percent. We're over that number, so at this point in time, like I say, the two million is a placeholder.
Yeah, I, my only comment is that they, they requested that they be in a major highway, but it's not mandatory, so I, I just wonder if there's other locations that can be a whole lot cheaper than what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, our second, the second choice that they had pointed out, I think, was more to the west of the current airport industrial park. It'd be the Schultz parcel, and that's where this number camp comes from, what that land is estimated to cost us for the same amount of land.
And that's the property that you're really looking at right now? Or don't you, that's the property you're looking at right now?
That would be the second choice.
Oh, okay.
First choice is the Somsen parcel, and their, their second choice was the Schultz parcel.
Right, okay.
No relation, by the way.
No. No.
So, but you know, we're still working on 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 the Samson parcel. But like I say, for I I have uh an understanding of what the Schultz parcel was valued at, and so that's we why we we know that's valid number.
Do we know what other cities have paid to bring in um these type of armories? I mean, is it just like an open check and?
We could probably check with a few. I know Mankato has had a new armory in the last ten years.
And they they didn't do a big one, they just they have a small couple acres, they don't have the big.
Well, they've got seventeen acres actually, but they're only built on ten acres, so they have to cross the road to get to the other land that they own. But in in our situation, the National Guard wants to have a a field maintenance facility.
Training facility.
Well, they've got the armory and they've got the the equipment maintenance building, the guys who pull engines and put tires on all the equipment. And they want to locate that, if you remember in in the presentation, somewhere between Worthington and Rochester. And they felt it was better to locate it closer to Worthington because that's the mechanized end, that's where all the equipment is located versus the Rochester, that's where the medical side is located. And so they usually don't drive tanks and big pieces of equipment. But the uh the from New Ulm, Mankato going west, they do. So they were looking to house both of those facilities at one location. What's unique about New Ulm is it would have an armory and a maintenance facility. Mankato wasn't asked to have an armory and a maintenance facility, so they only need enough land for their armory, which is ten to twelve acres. And uh so we're actually being hit twice as much land than probably anybody else is. And their rationale is, but you're getting twice as much development. You're getting two buildings and you're getting eighteen people that work, you know, here in the uh in the armory and you got another twelve people that work in the in the field maintenance building, so.
And if I remember right, Anoka was closing their facility and a hundred and some folks would be then training down here.
Well, they'll train down here once a month, but they 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 won't be.
No, not permanent jobs.
They won't be living.
No, it's weekend training, yeah.
Yeah. So this, you know, when you look at how much pressure that's putting on the city, I mean, you know, we're having to come up with twice as much land than anybody ever has, you know, even the city of Mankato didn't didn't have to come up with thirty acres. They came up with, I believe, around seventeen, but again, in two separate parcels. If you measure the block that they sit on, that's approximately nine point nine acres uh that the current armory in Mankato was on. And since this is battalion headquarters, they want this to be bigger. And uh so that's why they were looking for fifteen acres for the for the armory and then an additional fifteen acres for the field maintenance shop. Now, they did s- stayed at one time that, you know, they probably could get by with twenty-five acres. So that drops us from two million dollars down to one point eight million dollars kind of a thing, so. We we kept the two million in here because we don't know if twenty-five acres is gonna make it make it work.
And bas- and basically, the the two million dollars is coming from uh reserves. We've got uh four hundred and something thousand dollars in our land acquisition reserve, which is basically what this is for. Uh but our general fund reserve is healthy enough to uh come up with the rest of it. Sort of re- really similar to the situation when we uh built the uh dike, when we built the flood walls. We we had that money set aside uh to uh make up the difference between uh what our uh FEMA money was or our grant money was and what the city portion had to pay. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
So we're not gonna be levying for this.
Correct.
But we are going, you know, overall, over time, year after year, we're going to have to build up both our land replacement fund and our uh general reserve funds.
That would be correct. Yeah, you'll notice that in administration, even though the 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 amount in that budget went up dramatically, you know, the levy increase is only six thousand dollars. You know, it went up two million in spending, but taxes only went up six thousand dollars.
And that this is the, I suppose, the the other question is, uh let's just say we made up our mind, we were uh going to not go ahead and uh purchase the army pr- our armory prop- property. Let's say we just decided to call these people and say, thanks, but no thanks. Um is there anything else that uh the uh is sort of in the offing for that uh land acquisition fund?
Now, the land acquisition fund has been kind of like a uh put money in, take money out as as opportunities present themselves. Uh some of that money came from uh the Highway fourteen project done, gosh, eight, nine years ago when they came through town and they had to buy some city property from us. Uh and then when you get out by Cashwise, they had to build that pond and so they'd buy land from a property owner. So in that process, when they widened the road and made the curve, you know, a little bit wider kind of a thing, uh city had some property. So some money from that project goes into this account. And then, like, if we were gonna say, uh, build a new uh shelter for the uh lost and found dogs or something like that, you know, if we wanted to buy a half acre, we would take the money out of that fund to buy the land. And then we'd probably use the building aspect of it would come out of our general fund reserve, you know, to actually put a building up. So the land is just kind of like as we sell land, as we buy land, that's just been a a kind of a fluid account. That money goes in, money goes out as need be. And it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to use that, I mean, you could just probably rely on on reserves all by itself without dealing with that fund if you if you didn't want to, or you could take half of it or, you know, that'd be up to the council at that time, how they wanted to actually fund that. But the the key here is that it does not increase the tax levy, it's not, we're not gonna tax for it. It's something that would come out of existing savings account.
But it's still a little bit of sticker shock.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, for crying out loud, uh, you know, two million bucks, you know, for somebody else. It's it's just a little startling.
Is this the? The original uh proposal, if you remember, I had a million dollars in there and I thought that was, I thought that would cover it.
Is this a one-time deal? You know, so one time we'd put our our investments, two million, you're saying? And they're and we're saying, we currently own no other land that would be work for them. The city wouldn't have enough land currently?
Yeah, we had looked at a couple other spots, if you remember in the presentation, we had some land by the airport next to the water tower. And that would be able to house, uh, let's say, the armory. Okay, there's enough land there to make that work. Unfortunately, they they also want the field maintenance shop also. And and uh we could have made that work by going across the road that goes into the airport, you know, to the main uh buildings there. But in order to build the maintenance shop there, we've got to move the crosswind runway and we're not prepared at this time to move the crosswind runway, so that whole site just fell down as an option. Uh so I mean, those are the things, you know, we we tried to look at land where we owned and there's just, we just don't own thirty acres. You know, in in a nice rectangular or square chunk that we can say, oh, how about we give this to you? We we literally have to go buy it, much in the same way that we did with the uh D and R headquarters. Uh there was a proposal, uh city put a proposal in to the D and R headquarters uh for this site. We had to go out and we had to buy seventy-some acres. Now, we still own twelve and it's a long, narrow piece and, you know, I don't know how much use use, we could use it for something like the National Guard, but uh unusable for that. But but the fact is, when these things come up, we usually end up having to find land that's suitable for for the project. If you go back to nineteen nineteen twelve or something like that, there were empty lots all around town and uh the city council declined free land and instead bought two or three lots for three thousand dollars on the corner of uh Second and Broadway. Uh so the original land we paid for cost us about three thousand dollars.
And that for the armory?
And that was for the armory, and after we gave the land to the state of Minnesota in nineteen twelve, they built the armory and it's been here ever since. So they're kind of saying, this is a long-term investment, you know, when they when they plop down thirty million dollars for both facilities, you know, they're gonna be here for a hundred years. Now, we don't know that for sure, but past history, they've been here for uh quite a long time.
And that's their projected uh building project, thirty million dollars?
Yeah, it was in two separate, the the field maintenance would be probably a little bit less in in price, but I think it was twelve million and uh armory would be like eighteen million. And at some point in time, the if money became available, they they have approximately eighteen daily staff members at the armory, but they're allocated thirty-six people. Now, if the federal government decided to fund all thirty-six, they would have thirty-six people here, but that's no guarantee, you know. But at present time, they've got eighteen approximately that work here, you know, Monday through Sunday. So that's what that number is. It's a placeholder, we don't know what the number is, so we gotta have something in there.
All right. Thank you.
All right, uh anyway, two notable increases, uh which the one we just talked about was the land for the armory project. Uh the other one is salaries regular for a new position of facility supervisor and a holding account for possible wage changes due to employee classification uh for the salary study that uh was approved and is being done, so.
Well, and as long as we're talking about things, let's let's talk about uh uh facilities uh supervisor. That would be a new position uh and in charge of of uh all the buildings that we own, right? All the buildings that we will own. Can you just kind of summarize what you're what we're thinking about as far as the facilities supervisor position?
You did a very good, good job. I think if if you wanna break this down into two uh we'll call it two separate concepts. The first one uh would simply be, somebody's gotta do the paperwork and monitor and and input data and uh and somebody uh monitors the contracts and schedules uh inspections and and things of that nature. Uh so the proposal, I think, that was that was put together uh by the uh code enforcement department for this particular item was to have uh somebody that uh does all the paperwork, does all the shepherding and and watching the the contractors and the contracts and 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 bidding and things like that. But in addition, also did some building inspection stuff. You know, it'd be a building, you know, halftime building inspector kind of a thing, so it's kind of a half, half and half kind of a job. And and the concept there, I guess, is that uh we thought we might be able to get by with like a half of a halftime building inspector. Cause there was somebody out in in society that uh had those skills and we contacted him and and he came back at like ninety thousand dollars a year, he'd be willing to work for a halftime. And we said, no, that's not gonna work, so.
No, that's not gonna work.
Uh we can, we can, we can bring somebody full-time, do some building inspection activities and uh do the facility manager type job. Because I, you know, I just don't believe it's a full-time, three hundred and sixty-five days a year type of thing. So you got some, you got your high high points of the year and low points of the year. Now, should this not get funded, uh obviously, we would probably go back to the halftime building inspector kind of position and see if there is anybody else out there besides that one individual that would be interested. It's possible, uh but we would then go in that direction, more or less to free up the 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 building inspectors, the the current building inspectors so that uh maybe the supervisor could do more of this type activity. So, you know, it's just kind of shuffling it around. So I think if if we don't get a full-time position, that department would be possibly looking for a halftime position to try and solve the building inspection to alleviate work. So somebody else can work on these, that's that's already an employee. And it could be such that lower level inspections be done by this halftime person, they wouldn't have to be, you know, like residential or commercial. I mean, we get the 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 inspections for rabbits, the inspections for all those other things beside code enforcement. So not necessarily worked out in one hundred percent detail, but I think the issue is if we wanna look at our facilities more, we may wanna look at something like this. But at bare bones, we should at least look at a halftime building inspection type person.
So currently, we have two building inspectors.
Correct, and if you if you remember, we uh created a full-time fire chief and the fire inspector was also a halftime building inspector. So we had two and a half building inspectors and when we transitioned from the fire inspector becoming the fire chief full-time, that leaves a half a person, half a building inspector short. And so I think from their department perspective, they're saying, if we can just focus on building inspection, we probably can get it done with two people. But if you want us to do facilities management stuff and if you want us to do the rabbit stuff and if you want us to do the board of adjusting, you know, meetings and and all of that stuff.
And all that kind of stuff.
Takes away my, you know, my time for from building inspection, so I I really still do need a half person.
And we're currently there in other cities, aren't they, our building inspectors, or we?
Yeah, we we've got Cortland and that's was it four or five times a month we go over there?
Here we go.
We'll get it right from Mister Zabel.
I'm just trying to understand where we're at here and.
Oh, Zabel Building Official, yeah, um we picked up Cortland the first year, they adopted the uh state building code. And um they were thinking about maybe twenty to twenty-five permits per year. Um this year's been pretty good for them, they're actually, we've got four new houses going over there with two more on the books coming in. Uh we've got one big commercial project going on, plus the um maintenance, garages, decks, storage sheds going up. So we've been over there more than we expected, I guess, to to start off.
Yeah, and after we created a full-time fire chief position and did the transition and lost the half a building inspector slot, the the goal of uh the Elwood was to look at the operations over the next six months and make a decision, do we need a halftime person? Uh and and I think the response is yes. Uh and then we were talking about facility supervisor and could we blend those two into one position and solve two things, got the building inspection and we got somebody who focuses on the buildings. But I think if you ask Elwood, the the primary, the primary uh need is the the building inspector for his purposes.
Right, but for, you know, uh I mean, I've been worried about, I look around at the buildings that this city owns and and manages and taken takes care of. I mean, I've I've been worried about the age and condition of our buildings since the side of the old library started falling off and nobody knew it, you know, and we've got, we've got beautiful, beautiful, beautiful old buildings. And I it I just think it's it's time uh that we start focusing uh in a pretty intentional way on making sure that we've got uh got things in place. Um somebody, I think somebody should have over. Um, somebody, I think somebody should have overall supervisory, um, uh, duties over. Over these buildings, I mean, we all know we're gonna be asked to be, take over even more buildings. Uh, I mean, pe- people and, uh, want, pe- people want New Ulm to look in a certain way, they, they don't, they. They aren't satisfied with, uh, a pole shed for a fire station, we've got two beautiful fire stations, but you have to take care of those things. So, I'm, I've been in favor of having someone, uh, in the facility supervisor position for a long time and I don't think I'm gonna change my mind on that. I mean, I know we can make do, uh, we can probably make do with a halftime, but I'd real, I really think that having somebody, somebody who's. Somebody who the other, uh, department heads can go to and say, look, I, I, I really need to know, uh, how my building is doing. I, I think that's important, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I, I support it, uh, I'm, you know, we have to protect our investment for the future, you know, and, you know. With the elements for, you know, buildings take a toll, you know, and we need to, you know. Keep up on top of them for the maintenance of it, so I would support it, and if we're, you know, in Cortland and. Other areas, you know, that ties up a lot of time.
Elwood, can you talk a bit about how, how we're doing, keeping up with, I know we're half a position behind, but how far behind are we on inspections as far as. Commercial and housing and our apartments that we're, we're inspecting, where, where are we at overall, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but estimate?
Well, on the inspections, I think we're keeping up on those, it's the facilities, the HPC. The zoning, it's the other stuff that's taking the hit on, on that end of that, I'm not able to spend time focusing on that when that comes up. Some of the, some of the inspections do get drawn short because of other things we're, that are going on. Um, but that's our, that's our main focus is, is the building.
Since we started doing the apartment inspections, are we, are, are the apartment landlords cooperating and, and. Working with you pretty well so you can get in there on a regular basis?
Well, actually, when the apartment inspection, when the fire chief took over full-time, the apartment inspections went over there.
Oh, they went to the fire chief, okay.
But, um, we're, we're keeping up on that, um, the majority of the landlords. Um, were very good on letting us in and getting in there and doing the inspections, there are a few that we haven't been able to make contact with. Um, to be able to get in and get some payments on, um, and they work, they're working on that now.
This be considered a department head position or?
No.
Okay. What kind of salary are we looking, what's the salary range that we're considering?
Including benefits for the budgeted amount.
Just a little over sixty-eight thousand for everything.
And that's like the, that's like the two million dollars in the, uh, land purchase, that's, that's what we're looking, that's what we're putting in, we'll see what. How it all shakes out.
Candidate that can fulfill this role?
Within, internally, you mean?
I don't know that we have an internal candidate, but we wouldn't, we won't know until.
Put in that.
You know, a posting goes up or something like that.
Talk to HR.
I'm certainly more supportive of this here than I, I really, you know, last year, we talked about a full-time facility manager and we all really struggled with that. Concept, this concept makes more sense to me, so I think we can move forward.
Have we in the past, Elwood? We used a consulting company to come in and check all our roofs and buildings and everything?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Where are we with that?
Um, actually, I've made contact with the, the company Roof Spec is what we've used in the past. Um, he happened to be on vacation this week, so he wasn't able to give me a number on to see what, what it would cost to have somebody come in and look at. The buildings yearly or every couple of years to see where we're at with stuff.
I guess my opinion is, is I have no problem with the building inspector getting that work done, you know, part-time, whatever. A full-time facility manager, I guess I'm somewhat opposed to it, cause I think we could. For one thing, to find somebody that can do both jobs is gonna be very difficult, I don't know, there's probably somebody out there, but you're gonna pay a decent salary to get that person. The other thing is, is if we'd use the consulting firms in there and every supervisor. Works with them on their own buildings, I think we can get by without having that full-time position. I don't know, my opinion, I guess, I'll be honest, I'm not supportive of it, so, but. We don't have to deal with that today.
Are you okay with leaving it in for now?
Oh, yeah, we just leave it in, yeah, and then when we get into our budget meetings and stuff, and we can discuss it all at that time.
We're missing one counselor too, that needs to.
And, and, and having put it in the budget, uh, then, uh. You know, uh, human resources is free to look in to see what, uh. You know, what, 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 what a job description might look like and talk to other, uh, area employers, like I. I know the hospital has, uh, facilities managers that are not at a, not at a supervise, not at.
County does too.
Not at a department head basis, you know, more of a, more of a climb, climb up, uh, the ladder and check things out type situation.
Alright, so, uh, what I'll add just at this point then, just with, uh. Uh, the discussion that's happened to this point is, is that the taxes or the property tax levy that we set tonight cannot go up. After we set it here tonight, but it can go down, so, um, just to make that note. Next is, uh, some of the, uh, organizations, uh, in town that we. Um, assist, uh, in their budgets. Uh, you can see all of those, the heritage preservation, the human rights commission, sister cities commission, tree commission. Um, those are all our own commissions that we have. Um, also, there's other subsidy organizations, the Brown County Fairgrounds, the Concord Singers Economic Development Program, festivals. Uh, which is broken down between the fireworks and, um, uh, Bavarian Blast. Uh, the municipal band, the New Ulm Battery, Retail Economic Development, Small Business Development Center and Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund, so. Uh, those are the budget requests along with the preliminary budget, I think we pretty much. Matched the requests, so. Uh, and there really wasn't much change from previous years on those, so.
I, I just point out one thing that was not included, uh, something in. There's probably a sheet at the end, I can't remember, that identifies this, but the Chamber of Commerce had asked to. Uh, that the city plug in ten thousand dollars for a new city float. And that was, and when I, uh, talked to the chamber director, you know, that was, it would cost ten thousand dollars. But it could be six thousand, four thousand split, or it could be, you know, it'd be a joint sort of a deal. Uh, in talking to the fire chief, it, it was my understanding that the. They put some money into an old fire truck just to take it to the parades and just to, you know, that, that really became the float. Uh, so, you know, when we get to the final budget discussions and more analysis. Uh, we'll probably have more discussion about that i- in particular, cause I do know the chamber still would like to have a, uh, a float. And, uh, we did not include it because we have the fire truck. So, more on that later.
And yes, that is included, uh, in the last few slides.
Thank you.
Onto the police department. Uh, overall expenditures increased by a hundred and six thousand eight eighty-three or three point eight five percent. Levy increase is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine ninety-four, sixteen point seven three percent. Uh, here you can see the graph of the police department, uh, there's some increases there. Basically, operations are status quo, uh, the items that are affecting it the most are, uh, the patrol vehicles, there's two squads and one investigation. Or one investigator vehicle. There's also communication equipment that, uh, would be new in squad cameras. Uh, the old ones, I believe, are, uh, on their last legs, so. Uh, also, the canine unit, uh, is at the end of the, is at the end of the canine's life.
What is that, in dog years? Oh, never mind, never mind, I'm sorry, never mind. No jokes, no jokes.
Moving on to the fire department. Overall, the expenditures increased, a whopping two thousand four hundred and thirty-two or point five three percent. Uh, levy decrease, however, is thirty-eight thousand two fifty-one or twenty-five point three eight percent. Uh, here you can see the graph of the general fund fire. Uh, two thousand eleven, you see a big bar there, uh, that was for the armor radio purchase, so. Basically, the department's maintaining sta- uh, status quo except for, uh, rental equipment charge for, uh, new fire chief vehicle. It'll be also talked a little bit about in the capital improvement fund, which is where it'll be purchased from, uh, it won't cause, uh. The actual purchase this time will not, uh, increase the property taxes, so. But there is a rental equipment charge that will go into our replacement fund, um, to replace it in the future.
I, I think just for that, for information, and I know Reg will get to it, but. Because the new fire truck came in lower than what we had money set aside. Because it's in that, in that fund, that's where we would buy the new fire chief vehicle out of.
Out of that fund.
We did not, we didn't spend a million. You know, so there's enough money in there to do that, otherwise, we would, we would fund that vehicle in a different manner. It wouldn't come out of that fund, it would, it would be levied against the, the, the actual budget. Which would have really drove their budget up. Twenty thousand dollars instead of going down.
Alright, general fund, street department, uh, overall expenditures increased by, uh, basically forty thousand or one point seven four percent. Levy increase is eighty thousand three forty-nine or ten point seven three percent. Uh, here you can see the graph for the street department. Basically, it's just maintaining operations, um, however, uh, there has been. Uh, in past discussions, um, with the council and so forth. Uh, there has been a request to try to decrease the amount of bonding that goes into that fund for just the.
Right.
Uh, street reconstructions and so forth that happened there. Um, so, we did decrease that bonding from one ninety down to one hundred thousand, uh, for two thousand sixteen, so.
Get back to pay as we go on those street repairs.
Uh, sewer department. Uh, overall expenditures decreased by almost four thousand or two point six three percent. Uh, there is no tax levy in this department, it's actually funded by the public utilities. Uh, this department's maintaining operations, and here you can see the graph of that particular, uh, department. Moving on to engineering. Uh, overall, uh, expenditures increased by sixty-eight thousand or almost ten percent. Uh, levy increase is forty-eight thousand two thirty-one or thirty-seven point seven percent. Uh, here you can see the engineering department graph. Basically, the operations are remaining unchanged, uh, the significant changes, though, were the medical insurance, uh. And, uh, consultant services are. Are decreasing ten thousand, but the remainder of the current balance will be carried over at year end. Also, there is, uh, a copier, uh, that they need to purchase this next year, which will drive up that budget some. And then also survey equipment increase due to needed equipment. Airport, overall expenditures decreased, uh, just over twenty-five thousand or seven and a half percent. Uh, levy decrease is, uh, fifteen thousand four ninety-two or actually a hundred percent of that, so. Uh, here you can see, uh, graph, the airport. Uh, basically, the decrease is due to partial completion of airport projects, or the projects are not fully complete and the appropriate accounts will be carried over at year end. Uh, into two thousand sixteen, uh, if they're not completed. Overall expenditures, this is the cemetery department, uh, overall expenditures increased, uh. Eleven hundred and sixty dollars or half percent. Uh, the levy increase is nine thousand six sixty-two or fifteen point seven nine percent. Uh, here you can see the graph of the cemetery. Basically, operations are remaining, uh, unchanged. Community access, so overall expenditures increased fifty-one hundred and thirty-five dollars or two point eight percent. Uh, there's no tax levy in this department, it's all funded by franchise fee. And actually, uh, when that full franchise fee isn't used, uh, there's a portion of it that goes to. Um, help fund the rest of the general fund, so.
Just make a note on that, that the, uh. City attorney and I were, uh, in contact with Comcast and will be working with Norm Telecom here shortly. In, in updating the franchise agreement between the city and both, uh, cable companies and that, uh. The franchise fee that five percent is, you know, uh, capped out by, uh, state statute. Uh, but they are looking at a, uh, an additional maybe revenue stream that would be. Uh, like a capital grant that they would provide us.
Good change.
For, for equipment, which. Um, then could be used to offset what we've already got in the budget. Uh, and we've got a, uh, Mark has got a program that he'd like to, you know, present to the city council about how he would use that money. At, uh, when we get to that point. Well, I, I mean, I can tell you what it is, basically, uh, you know, one of the, uh, strategic planning session goals was the, the communication.
Yes.
And what, uh, the, our cable access employees have been doing was when there's something going on in the city, they, they're going out and taking video. And then they come here and they, they run the equipment back in the, in the little room here and they do the video for the meetings. And then they get busy doing that, and then the video that they've, that they've put together sits on a shelf until, uh, there's a day that they can come back and work on it. And so, some of that stuff has been sitting there for a long, long time, and so, in the interest of communicating of what the city provides for its tax dollars and. And just education in, in general of what happens in the city, on whether it's a street project or whatever, um. They, they can't get to the point of putting those fifteen-minute little videos together that, so they can put them on. Cause they're busy doing these meetings, okay? So, they would like to look at, uh, the potential of having a, a halftime person that would then free up. The ability to put these communication, these, these, you know, the videos that we had put on cable access to show. The citizens, you know, what, what they get for their tax dollar, in other words. Now, we've, we've had a few of them out there, you've probably seen the wastewater video where they go through and, and Dan O'Connor explains every section, how, how it all works and all that. Uh, we've also had the water department do that, but. You know, it's like everything else, those come in, they're kind of last, uh, last in line.
So, if, so if that grant would free up the equipment budget, then we'd have budget for some.
Correct, and if, and if that's something the city council, when we get to our, uh, strategic planning session meeting. Uh, in, in October, if that's something you wanna pursue, this would then be the funding mechanism to make that happen. And again, it wouldn't be a tax item, it doesn't, doesn't impact the taxes. So, more, more to come on that, uh, I think we're close to the franchise agreement document and then we'll have more discussion about this as we proceed.
Basically, the department operations are mostly status quo, which you'll probably hear again and again tonight, so. All expenditures are offset with miscellaneous revenues and the cable TV franchise fee. Moving on to the library fund, uh, overall expenditures increased twelve hundred and ninety-six dollars or point one eight percent. Property tax decreased by four dollars or zero percent. Uh, here's the graph for the library fund. Department operations, of course, are status quo. Parking recreation fund expenditures increased hundred and eight thousand six eighty-five or three point one three percent. Uh, the levy decreased thirteen thousand eight sixty-three or one point seven seven percent. Uh, the levy decreased thirteen thousand eight sixty-three or one point seven seven percent. Here you can see the graph of the Park and Rec Fund. Moving on to the administration division, overall.
Before, before we get, before we get beyond the Park and Recreation Fund, um, the, um, Park and Rec, I'm sitting on the Park and Rec, uh, commission, uh, and during, uh, various work sessions, there's been quite a lot of talk about, uh, the cost uh, to families to, uh, take advantage of our beautiful, uh, park and recreation system. Um, and one of the places where I think that we could re- really make a difference, uh, without, uh, changing the budget, uh, more than just a little miniscule amount, is to, uh, for the coming year, make the wading pools free for children. Um, I looked at the, uh, detail, uh, on the, uh, budget, uh, and, uh, essentially, the cost of operating the wading pools is about, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, those of you that were around, you know, twelve years ago when we, uh, were we're facing a real budget crisis and made all sorts of difficult cuts, know that we were considering, um, closing one of those pools because of the cost. Uh, and instead, because of the interest in keeping those wading pools open, we decided to start charging a small fee for using the wading pools. Well, you know, the budgetary crisis has passed, uh, but we're still charging a fee and, and the fee is going up and up and up to the extent that it was being proposed that we have a two dollar and seventy-five cent fee, uh, per use of the pool. And that, that would, that generates a total of six thousand dollars a year. That's what the budget looks like. It costs fifty-six thousand dollars to operate those two wading pools. And where, uh, the fees generated are only six thousand. I would really like to go back to a situation where the wading pools are free. So that if a young family wants to come in the park and use the park, they can also wading pool without, uh, having to pay a daily fee. It's such a, uh, it's such a modest amount, uh, six thousand dollars, uh, in revenue that I'd really like to remove that six thousand dollar revenue, uh, uh, item, uh, from the budget. And I, I'm not sure if this is the place, uh, to do that, if six thousand dollars is going to make that much of a difference in our, in our levy. I think it'd be about fifty cents a person a year. You know, but, um, that's, I'm, uh, I, I'm gonna be on this soapbox for, for a little while.
And I'll join you.
All right, all right.
Cause I had a call also today, and the person was a retired person, really concerned about it. Because there's a lot of low income people in this town, and like she made the comment that she hates to see a family in there with four or five children, and they ask for ten dollars to go to the swimming pool and they can't afford it, you know? We, we built these parks for our children, so I, I'll definitely support it.
Well, I know we have, uh, we pay a person to collect that money that has to sit there all day, and I'm sure we're paying him nine or ten dollars an hour with minimum wage increase and, um, and I know when I was there this summer with my granddaughter, there was, we checked in about three, four o'clock in the afternoon, and we were the third person there, so. But we, we're paying that person, you know, an hourly salary, and there was nobody there. That particular day, weekday was obviously quieter than the weekends, so I think we should try and figure that out, some way to make that happen as well.
I think just, just for clarification, I'd just point out that although this year the budget is roughly fifty thousand dollars, it has twenty-four thousand dollar in capital. So normally, it's, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar a year operation.
I, I should not have, I should not have focused on the amount of the cost, but the, the minimal amount, uh, that we bring in, you know, I mean, my gosh, uh, you know, and, and just looking back and remembering the cuts that we made, uh, uh, you know, a decade ago, I mean, we've basically restored the funding to the municipal band, we've restored the money to festivals, we've restored a lot of the things that during those very difficult times we had to cut. I think it's time that we go back to the way it used to be and make the, the wading pools free and accessible to, uh, any, anyone who wants to come and use the park. And I don't know if that needs a motion for that small little, uh, adjustment, or how do you feel about that?
I, I guess I would anticipate that when we would do the fees in, uh, November, December, that the city council then just set the fee for wading pools at.
But it does have a budget impact, so we need to.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I'm over that we cut that six thousand. Uh, do, do you need a line item? I have a stick.
Since this is a preliminary at this point in time.
I said, I got my soapbox, I got my soapbox, I can lift it out at any time. Thank you for listening.
I would support it also, so. All right, we'll, we'll keep a tally here, and at the end, we'll do the pluses and minuses and.
All right, so administration, uh, levy increase is twenty-three hundred and twenty-seven or two point oh one percent. Uh, here's your graph for the administration department. Basically, it's just maintaining operations. Uh, one thing I'll say about the Park and Rec Department is, is when you look at the salaries, you may see changes quite a bit between, or from year to year. It's just because they kind of move around people as they need them there, so when it comes to budgeting, it can get to be, uh, mass, and there can be changes, uh, in each division, uh, from year to year, but overall, they basically just remain the same as far as that goes, so. Uh, parks, overall expenditures increased sixty-six thousand one sixty-four or four point seven one percent. Uh, levy decrease is seventy-six thousand six forty-one or twenty-one point four three percent. Uh, here you can see the graph. Uh, basically, it's just maintaining operations. Uh, basically, there's a planned use of fund balance, uh, reserves, uh, in the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, basically for all of the capital projects at this time. Uh, approximately an additional three hundred and twenty thousand reserves would be used to carry over projects at two thousand and fifteen year end if they're not completed, so. Uh, so that would bring it over nine hundred thousand reserves that could possibly be used.
I should have waited. Darn it, I was so, I was trying.
Moving on to outdoor pools.
Sorry, I was too early.
Just as an example though, too, uh, if, if we didn't use the reserves and put this on the tax levy, we'd be looking at fifteen percent plus.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anyway, overall expenditures increased eighteen thousand three ninety-six or forty-seven point eight six percent. Uh, levy increase is eighty-one seventy-eight or seventy-four point six nine percent. Uh, here you can see the, uh, graph. And, uh, we kind of mentioned before that there is an increase in the capital projects, so, uh, that's why you're seeing the, the increase there, so. But other than that, it's just maintaining operations at this time. Uh, overall expenditures decreased by fifty-four thousand six thirty-nine or five point nine percent for the rec center. Uh, levy increase is thirty-five thousand two seventy-eight or twenty-three point nine percent. Again, the graph. Operations are basically, uh, remaining status quo in this department. Uh, civic center, uh, overall expenditures increased thirteen thousand seventy-nine, seven ninety-six or two point four two percent. Uh, levy increase is sixteen thousand three eighty-seven or fifteen point oh eight percent. Uh, here's the graph for the civic center. Uh, the department's maintaining operations except for, uh, just wanted to note that, um, this year we switched, uh, there's a fairground lease, which the land that the civic center, uh, sits on, we switched it from the city, uh, administration, the general fund administration over to the civic center since it's actually related to that building, so. Overall expenditures is for the community center, uh, decreased by twenty-one thousand one oh nine or almost twelve percent. Uh, the levy increase is six hundred and eight dollars or one point four five percent. Here you can see the the budget or the graph. Uh, two thousand and twelve was a little bit higher due to some needed repairs. Basically, this department's maintaining operations. Significant changes capital item for five thousand dollars to replace a commercial gas range. Moving on to the parking system fund, uh, overall expenditures increased, uh, just over ninety-four hundred or thirteen percent. Supported by tax or a special taxing district, which is not being increased, uh, this doesn't affect the general tax levy. There's six thousand dollars requested for new software and peripherals to migrate from paper tickets. And, uh, here is the graph for, for the parking system fund.
Do we know, I mean, just, uh, estimate on the, the mayor's new parking system downtown? That, um, worked out as far as what his projections were for, um, amount of tickets and revenue? Do we know offhand or? Anybody tracking that?
Nope, we don't know.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, we could probably take a look at it, but I don't think we've got any tracking on it right now. And just a note on the parking system, uh, I don't believe that that's been the revenue, the assessments that go out to the downtown people, that hasn't been changed since the day it started.
No, yeah.
It, it's maintaining and keeping everything going, so it's.
That's hard.
Character counts, uh, police departments continuing to work on implementation of this program with the school district. Uh, overall expenditures increased just over forty-four hundred or seventy-one percent. Uh, there's no levy in this fund. It's just using the reserves at this time. Um, here you can see, uh, past activity and the current budgets. Uh, Economic Development Authority Fund, uh, overall expenditures decreased twenty-eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars or one point eight two percent. Uh, there's no levy increase, and the levies at are very close to the maximum by statute. Uh, here you can see the graph for the EDA. Uh, basically, it's just maintaining status quo. Uh, it's also continuing to work on the affordable housing, uh, district that's, uh, on top of the hill. Uh, also, the property tax is at the limit for the EDA. And, uh, that's mainly the reason that it's at the limit is it needs to make, uh, loans right now to the, uh, TIF district um, for that project. Capital Improvement Fund, uh, overall expenditures increased by just over a million dollars to two hundred and twenty-nine or, or two hundred and twenty-nine point six percent. Uh, the levy increase is fifty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine or forty percent. Uh, the large increase in taxes due to budgeting a full transfer from the general funds, uh, for the full requirements of the fund in two thousand and fifteen. Um, so, um, we're just unable to do that transfer again from the general fund, so. Uh, especially when we're considering the armory land, uh, purchase, so. Uh, here you can see the graph.
We need those funds.
Uh, basically, uh, in relation to the sinking funds for restoration of buildings, the city needs to fund approximately five hundred thousand per year. Uh, currently, uh, we did increase it some for this year. We did increase it up to three hundred thousand. Uh, we'll be going through, um, some requests at the end here, um, as far as maybe to increase it more, so. Uh, for two thousand and sixteen, there's nine hundred and thirty-three thousand budgeted use of sinking funds, uh, in here. Uh, this includes the aerial ladder truck, uh, that we've, uh, has already been approved and has been ordered. Uh, also includes, uh, a new vehicle, uh, for the fire chief and, uh, which we have mentioned, um, and talked about. And then, uh, transfer of donations to Parks Division for, uh, German Park Project, so. Um, and actually, that one I found out, um, later after I'd already had this done, um, I, I found out from Tom Spitz that that, uh, actually shouldn't have been done, but we can correct that. Um, it was just a misunderstanding as, as to how that was, uh, showing, so. Um, but I can make corrections on that, uh, for the December meeting, so. It's not something we have to, uh, concern ourselves with tonight.
I think just for explanation purposes, too, the, the fire chief has been utilizing the grass fire rig, which is really an impractical in-town kind of a vehicle to use. It's kind of like just not the right tool for, for what we're asking to be, to be done.
So he's gonna get a, a little Fiat, a little red Fiat to fire in?
Electric car.
Okay.
Electric.
Give him one of the old squad cars.
Ah, yes, right, an old Crown Vic. Oh, I'm sure it'll be fine.
All right, debt service funds, uh, this is all in total. For all of the funds, uh, overall expenditures increased fifteen thousand or point two three percent. Property tax levy increased just over two thousand or point oh nine percent, so, uh, debt service levy is, uh, remaining, um, pretty constant the last couple of years. Uh, basically, the variables that determine the debt service levy have stayed constant, so. Uh, here's your, uh, graph of the, uh, debt service funds. Uh, some of those years, you can see that there's big spikes. That's mostly because of, uh, when we, um, call in debt and pay it off early, so that's, uh, that's when, like in two thousand and twelve and thirteen, you do see some spikes there.
We're moving to lower interest rates all that time.
Okay, we're coming close to finishing it up here, but, uh, gross property taxes then, uh, net change. Uh, you can see in two thousand and sixteen, uh, the gross property taxes, six million eight sixty-eight one thirty-seven. Less your special levies of the EDA and the special parking district of a total of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, uh, gives you a city property tax levy of six million seven eleven one thirty-seven. Which is basically a net change of two hundred and seventy-one thousand seven thirty-one. Uh, the gross property tax increase is four point one two percent. Um, the net property tax increase is, uh, four point two two percent, so. It's just, uh, one is taking out the special levies, uh, before you calculate that percentage. Levy.
Do you want to, before we get to the next one, have a rough idea that we could just explain that the actual four point one two percent may not be what we would actually see.
Yes, the four point one two percent may not be what you would actually see on your property tax statement, that. And that, and that's because, um, you know, as I mentioned before, there's about a hundred and fifty-five thousand of new construction property taxes that would be coming online. It is an estimate, but, um, it should be a fairly close estimate. Um, I try to, I try to go pretty conservative on those, so I don't get burnt, but, um, so, the hundred and fifty-five thousand should be pretty close, so, uh, that should be about two percent off of that, or actually, a little bit more, about two and a half percent, so, um, off of this four point one two percent, so. Um, that's about what we are looking at there.
So one point six roughly percent, and in two thousand and seventeen, we'll have some of the job Z stuff fall off, because it's the last year. And in two thousand seventeen, we'll have some of the jobs east stuff fall off, cause it's the last year, which will even help us even more. We'll have more increased valuation. We, we were hoping we could do it this year, but it's two thousand seventeen.
All right, levy limit, there isn't one for two thousand sixteen. Now to get on to basically the final few slides here, and that's just to go through a few of the items that staff has put together that you may want to consider doing. Um, to be able to, um, get some of the things done that, uh, you feel should get done. Uh, the first one is to decrease more that transfer, um, from the, um, from the bonding into the street department. Um, we would, that would be a hundred thousand dollars. So then we would be totally on operations completely and no bonding. They would go towards the street department, uh, for those reconstructions each year. So, um, that'd be a hundred thousand.
So we'd, we'd be, we would be moving, moving, moving toward a more of a pay-as-you-go.
Correct.
Yeah, so we don't get in that situation where things are falling apart and all of a sudden we've gotta borrow more money or, uh, do something drastic.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we are doing the work. It's just that right now, part of it's coming from bonding.
Right.
And for shorter-term projects like that, you know, uh, rather than a total reconstruct like Steve would do, um, you know, it's probably not the best use of.
Right, we should be paying, yeah, we should be just maintaining our property with, with current, with current dollars, so I, I, I'm, I'm pushing for pay as you go.
As Reg had noted earlier, he had shifted ninety thousand over in the budget currently.
Right, and this would be more.
This would just be additional a hundred thousand, and then we'd be weaned from, from the bond. And one of the things with the bond, you got bond costs and you got interest, so it just makes sense, but we could do it in two years, or we can do it in one year. Uh, that's a decision up to the city council, or you could do it in three years, but I think the direction is we get us off of, off of the bond.
Right.
Another item is additional funding for the building renovations in Fund Two-Ninety. That'd be about a hundred and sixty thousand more. So that's something that council has kind of, um, come through as saying that they might wanna do, so we included that. Fill the assistant city manager position, um, be approximately seventy-two thousand. Fill the, there is an administrative assistant that used to be in, uh, administration also. Um, that one could be filled, uh, that'd be about eighteen-five. Uh, decrease the amount of park and recreation fund balance being used, um. You know, we said that was about five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so, uh, that would be, you know, let's just say it's ten percent or up to ten percent, so.
Let me just point on that, uh, in two thousand one, when I got here, Park and Rec was pretty well limited to their fund balance. They had roughly about three hundred thousand dollars was maintained, so, uh, the prior city manager, if they got four hundred thousand, he would just take a hundred thousand out and kept them at three hundred, okay? Uh, current level, you know, and they got a lot of big projects, mind you, but current level, I think our estimation, uh, was right in that one point seven million dollar area, so. You know, it's a, it's a decision, you know, uh, what you wanna do. But in this budget, we took five hundred ninety-seven of it to, of reserves to fund some of the things they wanna do. Because their number doesn't count in that general fund, uh, thirty-five to fifty percent. It could be zero, right?
Oh, because it's a dedicated fund.
Counts towards that, so, you know, and, and so, we, we made a decision at the staff level, this is what we could do. And what Reg is pointing out is if you don't want to use six hundred thousand of their one point seven million, then now's the chance to look at in putting that on taxes instead of using fund balance for Park and Rec. I would say they've, they've got it.
Yeah.
And, and many of the projects they're doing are one-time deals. If this was operations, if it was for electricity, the answer would be no. But these are things for one, one time in forty years, they're gonna do this.
Well, and I know that, uh, in both times that I've been on the Park and Recreation, um, commission, these are long-term plans and projects, uh, so to, you know, make a major change like that, that, I think that would be short-sighted. I mean, we're, we're looking at, you know, accessibility in Johnson Park and, you know, a lot of, a lot of major things to, to take care of the things that we've got. Anyway, that's anyway, that's how I feel about it.
And, uh, just to point out that, um, you may recall when I went over the, um, the Parks Division that, uh, there's also another, I believe it's three hundred and twenty thousand that may possibly be carried over at year end too.
Right, cause things.
Right, so. Uh, city newsletter, that's another thing that kinda came up in our, um, in our strategic planning, uh, sessions with the council to try to increase the communications, uh, with the community, so, um, that'd be about fifteen thousand or so. Uh, also, there's enhanced communications with, uh, halftime assistant cable access, uh, Brian, uh, touched on that. Um, tax increase, that may not be a property tax increase at all. It may be able to cover it by a franchise fee if those changes occur, so. This is probably something that wouldn't have to be dealt with tonight. We could wait to see what happens and, um, come back and talk about it at a future time, so. Uh, contribution for renovation, a city float for Chamber of Commerce, uh, Brian mentioned that before, and, uh, that'd be ten thousand. Grand total of all those items is, uh, close to a million, so. Anyway, now we're to questions, comments, or we can, um, talk about what kind of adjustments that you do want to make.
Whose turn is it to talk?
Well, we know, the one I've got asterisk here is the waiting pools.
The waiting pools, that would be another decision point. Did, did you, how did you want us, how did you want us to proceed? You want us to vote separately on each item or just start throwing things out or? Work, work or?
If you're willing to lump them all together, you know, one, one vote's as good as not, but if you feel there's controversy, you could pull them apart one by one.
Oh, well, you know, we can always add these, add these in and hash them out, uh, later.
Right, we can set a percentage, levy percentage tonight, and we would have to just work within that number.
Right, I, I've just, I'm just looking to see if there's, I'm really not crazy about a ten thousand dollar float, you know, but but, uh, we could put it in and talk about it later.
I think we have a fairly good system set up, so I'm not sure I would support the assistant city manager position. It's been quite a few years since we've not had one, and I haven't heard requests for that position, so certainly pull that.
Well, and I think, uh, if we move forward with some of the other, uh, items, um, the, uh, going, uh, to adding a position that would be, uh, halftime inspections and halftime, uh, managing more of the facilities, I think, you know, some of the pressure, uh, could be taken off some of the department heads that, uh, have been, uh, picking up for that assistant manager position, so.
I'm assuming the administrative assistant position is one that's filling the city, if we hired the city, assistant city manager, that'd be that clerical person? No? So there's a request for?
That, uh, administrative assistant position actually helped out, uh, community development director probably more and the emergency management aspect of the assistant city manager position.
Oh, okay.
But since that emergency management's been shifted over to the commander's, uh, job duty, and the clerical has been picked up by the fire secretary and the police secretary combined, in one full-time position that does halftime in both, uh, it would, really would be just for the community development director to try and get the, uh, zoning.
Start over.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you, you've gotta, uh, fill the administrative, uh, assistant position. What do you, what, what do you have in mind there?
Well, I think there's support by uh, at least one department head or one person in, in general administration that would, that would like to have somebody consistently working on the zoning ordinance.
Got it.
Okay?
I'm all for that.
It does, it does absolutely nothing necessarily for me per se, cause I've got my administrative staff. This really is kind of like a catch-all position.
I think that, I think that, that three of us have worked on zoning long enough. I'd really like to see that done.
I think we need to get that, everything updated, so we're up to, up to par.
We need to have that egg hatched. But I'm, how, how did you feel about, how did you, the two of you feel about the assistant, uh, city manager position?
I guess, my opinion, I would just leave it open yet.
Okay.
Brian's really getting bogged down.
This is the first year that made me think hard about, about making sure it was in here. I, I, I will have to admit that. But if, if, if one were to say, uh, assistant city manager or the administrative assistant, I, for support of getting this project done, I would go with the, uh, part-time administrative assistant.
Right. All right, all right, all right.
Well, I know we can't support this fif- overall this fifteen percent, how much we've dropped it now, just the few items that we've talked about, but, um, I'd like to see us maybe break, break down some of these, um, the fu- the bonding funds, and certainly I support that we pay as we go, but, um, I don't wanna take that whole bite this in one, one lump sum. I think we should break it into either two years, potentially three years, and then be done with it. I just don't wanna see our taxes go up that much in one year, and I think we can spread it out a little bit and make the pain a little bit, uh, less for our folks.
What are you suggesting, fifty thousand each year?
Fifty, let's do it over two years.
Either two years or three years, so, two, there's more support for two years.
Well, let's look, let's look at additional funding for, uh, building renovations in, in the fund. We got one, we've got one sixty. How are we doing there?
Well, we've, we've got three hundred and
We have three hundred in there now.
We got three hundred in there now, so if you start at the top, decrease transfer from the street department, we already did ninety.
Right.
Okay, so if we wanted to worry about next, the, the twenty-seventeen budget, to decide if you wanna do a hundred or do fifty and fifty?
I'd like.
So that, so then that's done. I mean, we've done almost half, uh, in one bite. The additional funding for building renovation, we plugged in three hundred thousand in there, as Reg pointed out. If you look at the schedule, the replacement schedule, we're at the five hundred thousand dollar mark.
Right.
But, you know, some people, that, that's a philosophical question. Do you put money into a fund and accumulate it, or do you fund it afterwards?
Right, I, do you wanna, uh, operate on an emergency basis, or do you wanna, uh, plan ahead?
Yep. So, so just keep in mind, there's three hundred in there this year. You could wait for the twenty-seventeen budget and stick another hundred in, and in the following year, put, put another sixty in. You get to the five hundred thousand. You know, it just takes you a little longer, just like your, uh, street department. And we've got a balance. I don't know what the balance is right now, but we've been putting money in there and not drawing it out as fast as we've been putting it in there.
All right.
I guess I would support Brian, but he said just do a hundred, you know, spread it out over a few more years.
All right.
I would support stepping it.
All right. All right, but what does that mean for Reg as far as numbers? I'll bridge out. We've put in nine, we've put in, what, looking at the top line, decrease transfer from other funds to street department for bonding, so that we, so we've, we've put ninety in.
Correct.
We could put in another hundred.
Yep.
Uh, should, can we put any more in? Is there any support to put another thirty in? Or should we just wait till next year to add it up, increase it?
What impact would it have if we waited? Nothing really, right? Well.
Well, just that bonding interest and so forth.
Right.
When you get down to a hundred thousand, there's not a lot of, there's, there's a one and a half percent increase in tax levy.
Right.
But in the overall, the interest that you're gonna pay on a hundred thousand dollars over ten years.
Like I said, we're just, we're just, you know, moving slowly toward that pay-as-you-go thing, so, you know, I, I, I know we've got ninety in. Could we, uh, could we, um, could we add an extra ten? I'm not, I need, I need a, uh, I need some, if, if, if nobody's gonna support me, that, that's, I, that's fine, but I need to know how other people are feeling, cause I'd, I'd be pushing for toward, get toward, uh, pay-as-you-go, but I'm willing to wa- wait as well, you know, so.
I think we need to pay as we go, but, I mean, I'd like to keep the tax increase as low as possible at the same pay.
We're still, we're still about eleven percent, eleven, ten, eleven percent right now.
Right.
I think, could we do it over two years, you know, do fifty, fifty and for this year, and then fifty next year?
An additional fifty over what we've got now?
I would support that.
You know, just a.
Okay.
That'd be like, so, three quarters of a percent.
Yeah.
So what was that, fifty?
I was thinking fifty.
Are we gonna vote on these one at a time? It might be easier, so we don't forget what we've done.
Yep.
I move that, um, for the first item, uh, that, uh, we, uh, decrease transfer from other funds in the street department for bonding to, uh, in the amount of fifty thousand.
Yeah, I would second that.
Fifty thousand more?
Yes, right, not a hundred thousand dollars more, but fifty thousand dollars more.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Any more discussion?
I'm just nervous that, you know, we've still got a lot of cuts, there are a lot of areas to talk about, and is that enough?
Yeah, and we can, we can look at it the second time.
We can still make a change later on.
I don't wanna make the mistake that we did a number of years ago and, and we set our levy limit at eighteen percent, and the city went crazy, and we knew we were not gonna.
Oh, we're not gonna do that.
We not, we, you know, we're not gonna do that tonight, I won't do that. I won't vote for that. So. But I'll, I can live with the fifty for now.
Hey, hold on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, nope, most engaged. The next one. Are we at the one sixty?
We're at the one sixty additional amount for building, uh, renovations. I'm, I'm willing to skip this entirely for now, um, and just, you know, not add any additional for building, uh, renovations funds in large part, cause I'm gonna be pushing for, uh, you know, some more, um, you know, focused attention with a building facilities manager, and, and we've put in, what, three, you told us how much there's in, in that fund.
I think three hundred.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll just, we'll just skip this for now.
Yep.
And I, I think we'll skip filling the, I'm hearing that there's not a lot of support for filling the assistant manager's position.
I think we should pass on filling that.
But I would.
In, in lieu of not filling that, could I get another week of vacation?
Absolutely.
You wanna have time?
To move for the assistants.
I need it.
I thought at one time when our retreat, you know, we spoke a little bit about pushing it a little bit with the HR, maybe possibly, you know, some responsibilities and backup and things, so, that's my reasoning.
Um, I would certainly, we can, would support the administrative assistant position on the note that that, where their focus time is going to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
The zoning, we have the Z, the Z, the Z word. We're just excited to hear a new zoning ordinance.
It'd be nice to get it finished.
Yes, would be, would be.
So.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Pause, nope, motion carries. The next item, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I think. Take it from reserves.
Yeah, let's leave it alone.
That's where my head was. Let's pull that.
Yeah. City newsletter, oh, let's, we, I, let's, let's, let's.
I don't know if I wanna, I don't know if that's the right term, because I know in our retreat, that was the number one thing that we were talking about, was getting information out to the public, so I don't know if it's the newsletter, or if it's social media, or it's X, Y, or Z. So maybe their, our heading there is wrong, but I'd like to leave that in there until we have our next meeting. Uh, we're gonna talk about the retreat, because I think there's, maybe that's just the wrong.
Yeah, city newsletter or other communication, maybe we put somebody a dedicated Twitter account or something.
Tom, you can take that on.
That's right, tweet, tweet, yeah.
It's a tweeter.
He's a.
Yeah.
I don't tweet.
So, well, so, well, I, I move that we do, do add, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to the budget for some sort of communication enhancement.
And I think when we have our strategic planning session thing, that'll.
Right.
Formalize what we wanna do, so some of these things are ahead of, ahead of schedule, or some things are behind.
Yeah, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Pause, nope, motion carries.
And this, this one is a non, is sort of, probably a non-bill, uh, a non-taxed item, the next one is, uh, enhance the communication with the halftime assistant. If we don't put it in the.
I mean, well, if it's gonna be paid by the.
Well, do we have to have it in the budget?
Uh, I think the reason it's here is because if we didn't do it, any excess funds would, you know, reduce the tax levy, so. If you didn't spend it on this, it would go to reduce, it'd go to the general fund, and then we wouldn't have to levy sixteen thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying? Uh, so even though it's funded through the franchise, anything not spent.
Goes into the general.
Goes into the general fund, which then has an impact on your tax levy.
So we should put it in?
I, yeah.
Yes, all right, I move that we, uh, add, uh, the item, uh, to enhance communication with halftime assistance in cable access department.
I'll second.
We got motion second, any more discussion? No, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Pause, nope, motion carries. Ten thousand for a float.
Maybe what we could do on this one is, uh, Chief Mako is here, and maybe he can explain what we currently are utilizing for. The float, I think the float had become unusable, and had been seen as being unusable for a few years, and I think they had prepared something, so. Maybe you wanna just explain what we do use.
Uh, councilors, um, we have, uh, an older fire truck that we, um, stuck some money into. Well, Brian, when was that, about three years ago, we rebuilt the engine in it. And to a lot of the parades that are a little bit closer by, like Niklet, and, um, and, and some of the closer ones we go to. Um, the girls just ride on the fire truck, I mean, we take them over there in a van, and then we'd have a van and the fire truck, and, and they're riding the fire truck in the parade. Um, some of the longer ones, we did take the float with, but the, the float has really become, uh, in disrepair. Um, so what we did is, uh, uh, we worked out a deal with Chuck Spath and, uh, uh, Coles Wheelberg. And so, the longer ones this year, well, we took a new pickup and had the girls ride in the back of a brand-new pickup, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, I sit on the chamber board and, uh, now, and, and it's, was talked about at that particular meeting, that what we have is old, it does, it's just. Multiple years old, everything's faded, it's just, they don't wanna use it, it doesn't make our city look good anymore.
Yeah.
It's an old, old, old float, so.
And, and the history on it was that, the, the chamber got it basically from Heritage Fest.
Yes.
We insured it because of our large insurance, so we kinda like own it, but we don't really operate it, and.
It's an old hay wagon.
What's that?
It's an old hay wagon.
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of a mishmash of ownership and responsibilities, and it finally just kinda fell down to the fire department to kinda pick up the. The, the reins on this, and kinda drop the, the, drop the float and figure out a different way of doing it.
I think the chamber talked about a burning ceremony to get rid of it.
All right, the last of the Heritage Fest.
So we're next to this.
So we'll skip that, and now, and now can I make my motion to, uh, eliminate, uh, that, uh, six thousand dollar, uh, item? All right, oh, I have the number, it's on page.
We don't need any.
No, he does, it's on page twenty, he probably knows it by heart, page twenty-nine.
Uh, I guess for point of clarification, the, there is three hundred dollars in there for program fees, so they, maybe they run something special for the little kids, Cheryl, do you know?
Oh, good.
Can you explain what that is?
Good. Cheryl Corman, Assistant Park and Rec Director, the three hundred dollars is for miscellaneous programs that we do for kids, it's their little special extra out of the ordinary type things.
Out at the pool?
Yes, we probably do, uh, about, we plan like four of them a year, so it's not a lot, it's just something. And then just for clarification, the waiting pools still have to be staffed by a person for safety and sanitary reasons, so. Not, not necessarily a lifeguard, just a person to.
It should be staffed, and that's fine.
Just for safety and sanitary reasons.
I was wondering if we, did we always have somebody there even ten years ago?
Yes.
We always did, okay.
Keep the kids from drowning.
So if you wanted to make it totally free, then it'd be sixty-three hundred dollars.
And that's okay, like I said, I, I think, I think, like I said, if we hit a budget snag, that's fine, we can start looking at things like that, but I'd really, I'd really like. Uh, the other thing that I've been thinking about is, you know, we've had this whole Heart of New Ulm, Free Play Day, I'm on this active community stuff, you know, we should have more kids. Playing around in the park, anyway, I move that we, uh, eliminate the, uh, uh, admission fee item, Reg, you got that down?
I'll second that, and, and, do you have any other comments about this topic?
The three hundred dollars is for supplies for the program, so that's not.
Oh.
I mean, that's a separate expense item, so.
Okay. It's all six thousand.
Well, people love the parks, you know?
So Reg, so where are we at, are we need to?
We gotta, we gotta pass my six thousand dollar.
Any more discussion? On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nope, motion carries.
Well, now, it goes like this.
Negative? Shouldn't be overly bad.
Uh, the property tax levy is now, including all the special levies, would be six million nine fifty-seven, six thirty-seven.
What's our percentage?
Um.
Wait, wait, wait.
Five point four eight percent. But still, you'd be taking off that hundred and fifty-five thousand approximately, two and a half, so a half percent.
So be a couple thousand. So we're about two and a half or so.
Three, three at the top end. Oh, three percent at the top end or so, approximately.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Oh, actually, there is one thing I just thought of, the health insurance.
Oh, recalculating the health insurance.
We can recalculate that during this time period, but that should actually. That will actually decrease about forty-three thousand approximately.
Right.
How much?
About forty-three thousand.
So.
Decrease for the.
Two-thirds of a percent.
Yeah, two-thirds, yeah.
So.
So.
I mean, we could, if we put that in there tonight, that would decrease expenditures, forty-three thousand in property taxes, forty-three thousand.
Do you want us to take a five-minute break while you do those numbers?
Um, if, as long as I can just do it in total, I can do it fairly quickly here. Um. And I can get all the totals by funds and stuff there tomorrow, if that's okay.
While, while he's doing that, I was gonna originally talk about adding a, a line item this year, but I think we're gonna wait until two thousand seventeen, but. Um, the NUBRA has been working with me and working pretty hard themselves on coming up with a, um. Small business initiative for either ex- new businesses or expansion of current businesses. Um, these are incentives within the city to take a look at, um, helping new businesses that come into our community, so. Um, Kara Knaff that we met a few months ago has done a phenomenal job in, in researching what other cities are doing. Um, for example, Mankato has eighteen business initiatives to, for, for a new company coming into their community, we have one. And, and other cities don't have a lot, but even the city of Sleepy Eye has four initiatives, or incentives to, so I, I'd like to see what we can do. I think we're way too early to try and have any financial tag to that, and I think it's gonna take some time to figure out as a council if we wanna do this, what would it look like? Um, so I think it's more of a financial impact for two thousand seventeen, so. I just wanted to, I was gonna initially talk about.
Float that balloon.
We'll float it next year, so. But I think it's, it's gonna take some time to work on that project, and.
Okay, so what I have right now, and hopefully you'll give me a little bit of, uh, leeway tomorrow if I find out that something's not exact. But I come up with six million nine hundred and fourteen thousand six thirty-seven. Uh, total property taxes, including the special levies, with appropriations of twenty-four million one hundred and forty-seven thousand one ten.
Percentage then is?
Four point eight two percent, less approximately two and a half, so you're down to two and a half or a little bit less.
I can live with it. I'll make a motion to accept, accepting those numbers, and how do you want us to word that if you, um.
Offer the resolution, we, we offer the rev- resolution with reading, accepting the budget and the total appropriations.
Right, but like I said, he wants to double-check his math, so.
Okay.
I wanna make sure we give him a little leeway there.
I don't know, can we just add on to, give me the leeway on that, or?
Per your adjustment, how about?
Right.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That'll give you the leeway.
Oh, and we also have to set the public hearing dates. We also have to set.
Yeah.
You're gonna set the public hearing dates, okay.
For December first, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
At six P M?
Yes.
Six P M, I'll write that down.
And a continuation of the public hearing on December eighth, two thousand fifteen, at six P M. Any more discussions?
No.
All right, we have a motion, a second, offer a resolution waived reading to do what we just said.
Right.
Finance Director, Colorado.
Uh, Councilor Mack.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries, since that's the last item, meeting adjourned.